Mayor Lloyd?
Yep.
Mayor Proctor, Mr. Burton?
Yep.
Alderman Green? Alderman Welch? Alderman Madre?
Here.
Alderman Jones?
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the flag of the United States of America, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under God, one and indivisible. We do need to send some comments.
I need it.
Reports from directors. Who wants to go first?
A small report for you, Council. I'll tell you, I met with Mark Morden for the City of Galveston Emergency Management. He told us that an efficiency that we may have to look into in case of an emergency. And we don't have a dumping zone. Picked up our debris for the company that we've contracted with to separate and haul off. So I've been called Roger Corroga, calling the favor to Tilden Fertitta, see if we can use where he will see a room. That's in negotiation with him. And he's going to let her know within a couple of weeks or so. And he said, well, we'll get to it before anything happens. And I said, well, I didn't even know that. I just got down. So I had to fly to a different place. Done. We did sign a contract with DRC, who picks up the debris, you know, the next phase. It was just a renewal all over. DRC informed us, also told me about the debris. And they thought it was a major thing. So that's why we're talking with the City of Galveston now. I met with Tilman Fertitta's group. I also visited with several of the companies around here because we looked for heavy equipment during that time. And we were willing to put a deposit down because we know we'll be reimbursed from FEMA if anything were to happen. And they told us anything. Once this is several of these big tool rental companies said they would not, once it was in the Gulf of Mexico, they will not hold anything for us. If we wanted to rent it now and hold it for the entire hurricane season, we can do so. And I told them that was crazy. We're not going to do that. I also talked, visited with Roger Corroga on another program. He's the former mayor of Galveston. And he's the Galveston County Representative on the Ike Dyke Committee. And I know this is future planning, but it has something to do with this in the long run. And he's asked me to attend, then be monthly meetings. So I'll be doing that starting next month. I met with USW person Byron. And he told me about replaces some valves that have been corroded in lift station seven. And we love, it's on the agenda topic about a little later on. But it was more than just valves and things that needed to be replaced. I met with John Mercer and Brian Kramer. And once again, we'll talk about that a little bit later. We had a water board meeting. They met on July 28th. We had two members of the council that were in attendance. And I hope y'all enjoyed what was going on during that time. And we resolved a couple of disputes very nicely and very smoothly. And I think we have a mechanism now that we can use for the future after, you know, after all of us are gone, there's just something in place. Okay? Then I met with, Debbie and I met with the Texas Water Development Board, Richie Adonis and Debbie Vasek. And they're coming here this week. This is to meet on several things that FEMA, it was a, come and help me out because that was a meeting. It was a plan, plans that we...
Every, I think every five years they come and randomly drive through the city to sit for compliance with FEMA's rules and guidelines and everything. They found a couple of issues that is going to have to be addressed. They need some additional documentation. But they're coming home Thursday.
So we had to pull out, see if these...
Five years' worth of permits.
Right, go through the permits and then we pulled for these locations. It may not be any compliance. So we'll meet with them on Thursday. Also met with Scott Smith from the City of Galveston. His department has agreed to paint the streets, street stop, yield slow, whatever. That's coming, that agreement will be coming forth probably by the next month, board meeting.
Which allocation?
Oh, gosh, I don't have the locations right now. There are multiple, there are multiple locations.
Thank you.
Okay, and I understand that some of them from where they are now or where they were at one time, they have to be set back because there are turnaround and...
That's the random.
Yeah, so thank the chief for helping me with that. So that's it for me for right now. And what's, what was I, I'm still trying to get to complaints and concerns that were filed in March. And I said, I last meeting, I'm new here. So I'm, as I'm, you know, being baptized by fire here. I'm taking care of them as fast as I can.
Hi, I'm Chris Smallman. I've ordered a new microphone. I've ordered a microphone and we installed it on this table. He said it would be installed within a couple of weeks. Depending on, they're going to try to match what y'all have here. I'm assuming y'all run it under anyway. So Robert and I have a microphone. I called and tried to schedule to get on the schedule. The first one on the schedule for the auditors. So when they start their, of course, normally any city can't start their audit process till after they close their fiscal year. So I'm trying to get on their schedule to be the first thing that they do. I've left messages, which I think that like first part of the year too, I didn't get any response back. So I'll stay on and see what I can get scheduled. I spoke to the City Plus with the reclassification. They're wanting to meet either, they set the dates to finalize this September 15th or September 20th. So hopefully that's will be the last, last, you know, whatever that they're requiring to get it on the website. Other than that, I called and had the generators serviced and checked to make sure it is hurricane season. If they all work. The last time that the power went out here at City Hall, the big one here at City Hall didn't kick on. So it's, it's, it needs a can sensor or whatever. I don't know the mechanics, but I have to call in for their opening and it's under warranty. So hopefully that will be replaced in this one here at City Hall will be operational. So that's it for me. Plus budget stuff, so that's it.
The, I just want to kind of cover the July 34th. Had 62 calls for service. There were 42 residential checks performed, 279 business checks. Had six arrests, 322 citations issued. And you'll start seeing COVID enforcement information on the reports as well. Citations issued were 16, stop work orders with red tags, 28, and warnings issued were 12. And concerning the painting project that Robert's working on. We were going to paint the infamous intersection at the Melboxes with the yield on both sides. So facing eastbound and westbound traffic. And then repainting the striping at the intersections of Jolly Roger and Bob Smith and then Jolly Roger at Buckminster. And then the white stripes. We can't do anything about 3005 at Buckminster because that road project is still going on. They still haven't completed the metal plate replacement. That's it.
Okay. There was a council.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the West Galveston Island Property Owners Association meeting last Saturday. I was the only council member there. Don Towner was also there. He's been put in as a board member with them. And I took video, put it on my Facebook group that did make these reporters and on YouTube. I also sent the leads to Derek Wong, the chairman, and also to Terry Leo Wilson and Keith Henry, who were there as, for a candidate forum. Because they're both running for Mays Middleton's old seat for the representative for our area. It was quite interesting. You guys are welcome to look at it on YouTube or on my Facebook page. One thing I want to bring up next is that, one thing that's really helped with transparency with our city is having a city checkbook be put on our new website. We have January, February, March, April, June, July 2022. And thank you, Debbie, for doing that for me. I've asked with the public information request for years, every month I would ask for it. And I've even had proof the citizens who paid for to be able to see the checks. So it's nice to finally have some transparency. Let's see. And now, of course, we have the agenda packet on the website for really coming along. But as a city mayor, we work off the fiscal year, which means October to September. A citizen asked me about adding October, November, and December on the city website. But, and I went ahead and asked Debbie about that. She asked, in turn, asked the mayor. And as I understand it, the mayor said no. So Mayor, how can we as a council make an informed decision about budget without having all the information? And how can citizens understand it? So I asked with an open record, I've asked, I asked Debbie for October, November, and December 2021 checkbook with a public information request. And I got the reply today. Thank you so much, Debbie. And, but just to let you know that because I put in a public information request, I was added to the Mayor's Hall of Shame and the agenda packet. So anybody who has a public information request is added to that Hall of Shame. The bigger issue is this. The citizen, the citizen I talked to is concerned about asking for information with a public information request because they don't want to feel targeted for asking for public information. It should be simply on the website. No citizen should feel concerned. Everyone has a constitutional right to ask for documents and records that already exist. So Mayor, I am asking that you change your mind and maybe put those three months on the city website. Next. Mayor, I am forced to bring up the same topic that was brought up last month. It is an issue that was first brought up last April during an executive meeting. Without stepping outside the bounds of executive session, this issue is concerning and is deeply disturbing and is a personal issue. Our city has spent over $14,000, status public record, in legal fees to Alton and Alton. But, our mayor, you have withheld the findings from Alton and Alton from council. And I understand you are holding a letter addressed personally to me that was addressed from Alton and Alton that would put this matter to rest. I have that, and laugh, thank you. So this is not, it's a serious situation.
If you were saying something that was factual, that would be different.
I've asked for this letter and in the email dated June 21st, your response to me outside of executive session was, "There is a process, Alderman Jones, that we're working through. Your actions have put the city of Jamaica Beach into a situation that we must work through and without liable." Did you mean liability? "The city attorneys are part of an investigation and have been hired to protect the city. Do not contact the city attorney or city staff about this investigation or anything else. May I remind you that the complaint is against you. If you should need information, it should be directed to me at this email address. I will share when the city's investigation is completed." That's from June. So that's been two months ago. "Mr. Mayor, you forced me to seek legal counsel to resolve this issue. I do not want to choose this avenue to get a letter that's addressed to me or have to sue the city and put a financial burden on the citizens that have placed their confidence in me to serve. We have already spent $14,000 on nonsense. I need to be able to move forward without any constraints on my ability to serve the citizens that elected me. This issue needs to be resolved and soon. And it is insane that you were so willing to bring this issue to council but are unwilling to provide us with the decision from the city attorneys from last June. Mr. Mayor, I am requesting that my letter be delivered to me soon and this matter be brought to a public conclusion and we move on to the more important work of serving the citizens of Jamaica Beach." Thank you.
Okay.
I attended the mutually newly-elected city officials orientation, August 11th, 12th, in San Antonio. I had read and did the computer thing. After six, seven months in service here, I wanted to go and hear firsthand and see it and see their slides. There was over 100 of us there, four or five mirrors, three or four city administrators. It was a very good meeting. It was very informative. And many of these same questions these guys had, they brought forward and it was good. I benefited from it. It was worth it. I'm interested in it. I met with John Mercer, Brian Kramer, Brian Hufnig, Rob Conter for the initial engineering survey of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project and looked at late Lift Station 7, the pipe and failure. Later I talked with John, and that's how I developed the 109 grant. It, you know, it's really cool. It'd be like you said, in certain, in this circumstance. I met with Debbie and reviewed the proposal and reviewed the proposal 2023. But I didn't line out them, I lined out them. And really was helpful to me to understand how we really work and how I set up and going back and tracking the money that was transferred each time. And it's, I mean, it's just mathematical. Guys did good, you know? You made money or discarded. You just moved it to the next year. This is what pay policy is done. And at times, at times, you took money from reserve when necessary. That's just good business. Okay. On social media, I launched a poll of COVID's beach, river, pretty plan. Had a good response from that. The public seems to really be, want that plan. Our citizens, my constituents, the people that elected me as an Alderman in large, okay, that I represent, they seem to be interested. Thank you.
I'm not going to draw it out. I'm not going to draw it out.
I got a long one. I just want to tell everybody how much I love Jamaica Beach.
I do too.
How great it is sitting up here on council and how much I enjoy it. Thank you, Phil, I'm sorry.
Consent agenda and approval amendments. Number eight. Following items are considered routine by city council and will be enacted by one motion. It involves approval of table amendments for correction from regular city meeting 6/20/2022 and approval of minutes from the workshop and regular council meeting on 7/25/2022 and approval of minutes from workshop meeting 8/8/2022. Reliable motion. To approve.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I'm in favor.
New business. We have a guest here to discuss and answer questions from city council. I'm sorry, we need to, discussion consideration, take action to approve resolution number 2022-07, authorizing the mayor to approve an agreement between the City of Jamaica Beach and John D. Mercer and Associates for professional engineering inspection services for 2023 and 2024 waterline replacement project not to exceed $118,635 and $886. Have a motion to discuss. I'll make that motion to discuss. Second? I don't know. You want to? We, yeah, we...
Motion, in second, to vote. Is it announced?
Well, they discussed, they discussed. You have a motion to discuss.
Got you. I'm trying to follow Robert's rules. Robert's rules.
Yeah, Robert's rules.
Okay, yes, this is a, this is the engineering professional service for the inspection services for the year 2023, 2024, waterline replacement. I have all email, despite everything that was in there. It's just too much to print up for everyone. We go through rings of paper. So I have asked Brian to come in to answer any of your questions. He's the man who could answer anything that y'all have. I hope that y'all review the things I already know too.
Any specific questions? Alderman Jones?
Yeah. If you want to break it down, just let me just go ahead. Engineering bidding inspection for 2023 is $39,862.21. And then the inspection in the TOPO is $15,330.85. Going to project 2024, the engineering bidding inspection is $45,821.26. Inspection TOPO is the $17,624,056, which gives us that total of 100... Yeah. It's 118,635. I have my ear. 118,635 dollars and eighty cents.
Your show.
Yeah, this is, and what this is, is just the next, is to do the open engineering survey and for the next two phases of the water line project that we've been working on for the last three years. It's just the, it's the next, the next two phases of these projects. The last two, the last two was very successful in the last, last few years. The one before that was the COVID year, they drawn out a little bit longer. But we had COVID, we had tropical storms, we had several different things. Yeah, the water table was, was very high. We, you know, fought, we fought that because of, because of different things. But, yeah, no, this is the next two phases. Where, where actually have our survey crew is, will be out here later this week if they approve and ready to start moving, start on these phases.
Yeah, I have to call in. I'm not in favor of, and I can't vote. And I would not vote to award both engineering contracts. I am definitely in favor of awarding Phase Four contracts. Phase Five is going to be done two years from now. Where I stand, and my thinking is, we, is it not 67,000, 65,000 for Phase Five? What is the number? I don't need to break out for that too because I know what they are. Just a total number.
Roughly 64,000.
65,000, something like that.
Yes.
Where I'm at is we need that money for projects that is on this list that we just looked at that are priority projects. We say we don't have the money. Okay? That's money right there. I would much rather spend it on those priority projects than something we're going to do two years from now.
Are you saying that's not a priority?
No, it's not.
The water now replacement?
No, no, Phase Four. That's our next one, Woody. Let's do that. Let's pay for it. They do an excellent job. Their contracts are, it's an A and E format. It is, I mean, they, they have covered, I've read them, extensively. The approach and the way you go after it, it's a stage gate process and it is, it works. And I like what you do. I just cannot justify my mind spending this money, 65 grand, it's going to be done two years from now. Where we need this money to go to piece of media projects? That's it. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Just wanted, just for your FYI, there's $85,400, $69,000 left over from the last project to move into this one. So you're really not touching a whole lot in the recurring rate that you have left over. And then I would imagine, and I think we can negotiate this, is if we do this, we'll get a discount if we do it above at one time.
Well, one, even though the contract amount is for, total is 118,000.
118,000.
118,000. It won't all be spent this year. It's in, because, I mean, that just gives me to go ahead, to go ahead and start.
I realize you're willing to engage.
Yes, so like, once the design is built, I mean, once the design is finalized, we'll build a page of the contract. Once it's built, you know, I'll...
Understand the inspection.
So, so, so once, once the final, once the final design phase is done, you know, 75% of the project will be built. And then the remaining 25% won't get, won't get built until the project actually happens because that's the bidding and negotiation phase. The bidding, you know, it's my time, my time coming to bid openings and, you know, pre-bid meetings and pre-con meetings to get everything started. And then the construction phase, you know, building and all that. So there's 25% of that won't even, won't even come.
Late 2020.
Or it could be early, the early part. Because if I have the, if we have the engineer complete, once y'all have approved the budget next year in October, like, once it's, once the money's approved to go out to bid, I, we can, we can bid it in, we can bid it in November. And certainly it's November, if that's what we wanted to do. It's just whenever, whenever we feel the need to do it, we start, we try to do it in November. Last, the last two phases because to try to be done before spring break is when the busiest time generally, generally is. And we try to catch, try to, try to do the construction when you catch the northerners, a little tide out more, you know, than, than the active time of this, this time of the season, you know? It's what you get, you know, April and May and June, then getting to August and September and you start getting, you know, hurricanes and tropical storms and tides.
Brian, I get it, I get it. Again, my, my responsibility is also to look, you know, I have that, I have a... But again, I, my, my responsibility is also to look, you know, I have that, I have a budget situation, we have a budget situation, where we don't have the money to do other projects. So I cannot see the sixty five grand early cash flow. That's, that's just, I, I get it, I understand.
So would it, is it a, is there a chance that that number would increase if you waited for a year to sign on it?
The, uh, I mean, there's, there's possibility it will increase, yes. I mean, our survey, our, our survey, our surveying fees could, could, could be more next year, I mean, I, they will be more next year. Our rates change, our ra, our rates change.
Do them now, we'll save us money.
Our, our, our rates change, our rates change yearly, maybe significant, not maybe insignificant amount, but our rates, our rates change. Everybody's rates change, it'll be close to time, I don't know, uh, if they will, if they will change, there is a possibility that the rates will change over the year. Uh, the benefit of doing both at the same time is when you get this, when, when you get our survey crew here, they can, they can get it done. Uh, you know, it's about like a day and a half to two days per, per phase. And, you know, if we get, if, if you do both of them combined, I look back, if, if you look back at last year's phase, we had an estimated, I think the, uh, the survey estimated to be eight thousand, eighty six hundred dollars is what we had estimated in, in our contract from, from last year. It was eighty six hundred dollars, and I actually looked to see what we billed, because we, the last time we did two phases, we did the engineering for, for two phases. And I look back and what we billed y'all, we billed y'all five thousand dollars, less than five thousand dollars apiece, I think it was like forty five hundred dollars for each survey. So y'all, y'all had a, that was where, when we had eighty five thousand, or eighty, eighty thousand left over from the previous year. Part of that saving was because our surveying crew did both projects at one time. And so, but, I mean, I understand, I understand your concern, I'm just, I'm just.
Appreciate it.
I'm just letting you know the, the facts that I pulled up from, you know, from, from previous, and then that was, that's one of the reasons, uh, you know, is because once we have our crew here, they can just go ahead and their, you know, they, they can get more work done, they have more to survey, they just, you know, just, like I said. So, and then, so I, I have it estimated that the, the surveying would be five thousand dollars if, if we get both of them. And I, I want to put this together, and it's, it's, that's an estimated five thousand dollars, so if, if, you know, e- even if we just do one of them, it still might be five thousand, but I, I've kinda already put a little bit of a discount in there for, for doing, for doing both of them. So, uh, because I, you know, because we was, we was trying, we was trying to do both of them together, so. So that number, you know, the, the number, the number, uh, I feel com, pretty confident that even if we just do one phase, that it, that the surveying would be five thousand dollars for this phase. But next year's, if we wait a year to do the next one, I, I can't, it's probably closer, probably closer to seven or eight. We might guess, so.
Yep, do you have a motion to vote?
I make a motion, we'd love on the, uh, on just, as red. My good, say you eighteen, six thirty five, eighty eight.
Hundred eighteen, six thirty five, eighty eight?
Mm-hmm.
Second. Uh, vote, all in favor?
No.
No.
Three to one. Next item.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, discussion and action to set the property tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty three, or twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. We have a motion to discuss.
I'll make that motion.
I'm checking.
Go ahead, sir.
Can you have that break down?
Um, basically, we'll, basically, if you look at it, this is coming strictly from Galveston County. Um, and the council needs to decide, I have to let her know in the morning for her to get her documentation and everything ready for the public hearing. You have two rates to choose from, the non-revenue rate, which is the zero, one, five, three, six, two, nine, per hundred, or the voter approved rates, that's the highest that you can go without having to go out and, 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 I'm election, I heard it, but. Is, the second rate is, is a little bit higher, it's, it's actually less than what it was last year, but it's zero, one, six, five, six, one, three. And the difference in the two, which I told you on before, if you go with the non-revenue rate, it, with the calculations, everything, it's about eight hundred ninety one thousand. You go with the voter approved rate, it's nine hundred forty thousand, yeah. So that's, I just, y'all have to set what you want to get, to start the process, to get it as a public hearing, um, and then set that rate. And then we have to pass it. So. How y'all want to do it, I mean, it's kind of a vote, I mean, even though he wants yes, or, or, do y'all wanna go with the voter approved rate, or do you, how you wanna do that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we need voter approved tax rate.
Were you just saying, yeah, if you want that one or?
Yeah, like a motion, I like a motion to vote, uh, on the voter approval tax rate of point one six five, six, one, three.
Per hundred.
Per hundred.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second, second. All in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay.
That's less than last year.
It is less.
Thank you, guys.
But with the new homes and the, you know, it's, it's more room. Okay, I want to discuss the public hearing, that's kind of what I, just kind of running this to get.
Okay.
Um.
Need to read it out, so we can discuss it?
Well, I'm just, I'm, you're putting it down.
Item number three, discuss and actions to set public hearing date for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three property tax rate in fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget. I have a motion to discuss. I'll make that motion to discuss, second.
I'll second.
And now.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get it, I mean. I have to notify Galveston County for, you know, to jog over with the voter approved rate in the morning. She, we have to public, have a public hearing on the tax rate ten days prior to passing that tax rate. If I'm looking at my calendar correct, this is our last meeting in August. First meeting in September would be September the fifth, it's a holiday. Mayor, you've elected to have the, um, next, the sixth is our next meeting. I was going to try to run that public hearing, or notify Galveston County to run that, run that public hearing on the sixth for the tax rate. Um, if y'all decide, I mean, I'm assuming y'all agree with the budget, we can do the, do them simultaneously if you want, or we can do the, we can have two, have the tax rate on the sixth and then do the public hearing on the budget, but they both have to be passed. If you don't want another meeting in September on the nineteenth.
What are we seeing about, uh, doing the back-to-back meetings like we did today?
Okay.
On the sixth?
I would prefer to do it on the nineteenth. There's a lot in this.
I have to do the public hearing ten days prior to passing.
But if we prove it on the nineteenth, you're due, aren't you?
No, you have to put it in the public hearing, you have to put it in the paper.
I thought we could do the tax rate on the sixth.
Yes.
Well.
Are you, you want to do two, you want to do a public hearing on the tax rate on the sixth, public hearing on the budget on the nineteenth, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, 'cause that'd like another review of the, of the, of the budget sometime.
I thought y'all had settled that.
We just settled it, we just voted, we just voted to accept that. We just voted to accept the budget.
Did we?
Yeah. You might not have voted for it, but we voted for it.
Did we do that? So we've accepted this budget, as it is?
Yes.
There's nothing, there's no, nothing in it? Has a lot, a lot in it. None of the projects are in it, that I brought up?
Yes, nearly every one of your projects is in it.
Well, not, not necessarily all of them, yeah.
We'll not be pulling the notes right now, uh, lift station, phase four water line, beautification, wastewater treatment, security cameras.
Go ahead, what's not in it, what, what is not in there, or did we vote on it?
We've already accepted it, yeah.
Excuse me?
We've already accepted the budget.
Without voting on what I?
We voted.
We voted on it.
We, we voted not to vote on it.
You're still gonna have to have the public hearing.
I missed it.
I just need to know, I mean, that's what I was trying to speak to you in that, in that, am I gonna have to go back to drawing board and start this budget over again?
No. We're done deal.
Yeah, we're just trying to figure out the.
I'm just trying to set the public hearing date.
So in our budget, we will not have.
Uh, Gil, we've already discussed.
I can't say anymore, I can't see.
We're, we're moving on, trying to figure out the meeting, that, that's already been discussed and decided.
Thank you.
Because I'm going to Galveston County in the morning, so she can prepare the documentation to fit the ad in the paper to post our public hearing on the tax rate, and we'll do it on the sixth. Is that so? Because I still have to be, has to be ten days prior to passing it, so if you look at your dates, when you're getting down, it's almost ten days. It's getting down to where I have to do that.
The sooner the better, I'm gonna get this up for your place to vote, okay?
One second, for the record, I ask that we have a record vote for each one of these items, standalone items, so we have a record vote that would include these items. Oh, I didn't hear that. That's all I'm gonna say, in the comments.
So we're looking at the sixth, correct?
If you want to vote on the sixth, then I'll, I'll give them credit on the sixth.
So, um.
Definitely gonna have to do the tax rate on the sixth.
Right.
So we want to do a public hearing on the nineteenth for this budget, and then go in and pass them both, if that, if we want to do it that way?
I would say the, the fewer meetings, the better.
Okay, well, we won't have to.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, put them back, yeah, versus spread them out.
And I'll do it.
So we're looking at the sixth?
Yeah, okay.
We're looking at the sixth. So do I have a motion for the meeting to be held on the sixth?
Oh, we can.
Public hearing on the sixth, do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Have a second. All in favor?
Who seconded, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All in favor? Next item, uh, this discussion, consideration and take action to approve the renewal agreement between the city of Jamaica Beach and host compliance in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and twenty five cents to collect hotel motel tax. Do I have a motion to discuss?
Mayor, it's not my intention today that they have not gotten back to us, that individual is on vacation until met this week. I would like to make a motion to table that item until they get back to us.
Okay, do we have a second? All in favor? So that will be tabled. Item number five, discussion, consideration and take action to approve resolution number twenty twenty two dash zero eight authorizing the mayor to approve an agreement between the city of Jamaica Beach and John Dean Mercer and Associates for the professional engineering and inspection services, and to go out for bids to rehab the Bayside Lift Station number seven, not to exceed a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Do I have a motion to discuss or? Okay.
This is on the next fiscal year's budget.
Mm-hmm. I'll put it in there, because I'm, last meeting I had.
We need a motion to discuss.
The last meeting that I was sitting here as well?
No, we're, we gotta, we gotta discuss.
Who makes the motion to discuss?
I, I make a motion to discuss.
Second. Okay.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
This is probably the, the, you know, the cart before the horse on here, we're getting ready to approve something that we haven't had a budget approval as of yet. So this would be very premature, I mean, although we know it's an emergency.
I would, I would like to have him, means he's here, discuss the situation.
Sure, but.
But it, it hasn't been approved on the budget yet, it just came to my attention.
Switch off, pay it before, no?
So, do you understand where we're coming from? We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to table this.
Okay.
Until we get approved budget, which we have to next month.
Okay.
Now, can we utilize your service while you're here so you can give us that?
Yeah, you'll give us some, what's going on?
Alright, so, uh, I met with Mr. Pintera, uh, a couple weeks ago, uh, coming here to introduce myself, showing the projects that we had in the works from the previous, from the previous administration, whatever, and we went to look at the water park, uh, the wastewater plant while we were here, and while we was, uh, talking with Byron from.
USW?
Yeah, USW, uh, he, he brought to our attention that the, uh, lift station number seven at Bayside is, uh, would have malfunctions, wasn't, had leaking side, so we went over there to look at it, and the, the piping is leaking, uh, whenever, whenever it's pumping. Uh, so you're getting probably thirty percent, or you're getting, you probably get thirty percent loss when, when it, when it's pumping. It doesn't matter which pump is on, it's float, backflowing on either one, so that means the check valve in the inside is not working. Uh, and so what we're proposing to do is to rehab that lift station similar to what we did to the lift station right here that we rehabbed, uh, this last year, or this, this last fiscal year.
How much was it to do this one, do you recall?
Yes, sir, it was like one twenty two.
And this one's a smaller unit, it's still one fifteen?
Okay, and this is, this is the reason why, because all the, all the piping at that new station is still inside, it's all, all on the ground and inside, the check valves are, are vertical, and new standards are, all your, all your valves have to be purple, have to be purple, bigger to the ground.
Okay.
So we had to come out, and it's, it just, though, that, that pump, that lift station was designed so long ago that we had to bring it up to the new standards, once, once we had to bring it up to the new standards, which will, will make the piping come out like, like this one, like this one is. And so this one is one fifteen with the engineering and surveying included. The other one was one twenty for construction, that was not plus engineering and the survey and inspection cost. So that one, I, I don't know, I don't have the final numbers in front of me for that one, but the, the total package, the total package for that one was probably closer to two hundred thousand, but you include the engineering.
And the work.
And the work. And this one includes, this one includes the engineering and the work and replacing both of the pumps. We didn't have to replace the, any of the pumps on, on this one, what we had, we used.
And this would be made considered an emergency, I mean, needs to be fixed quick?
I would recommend it be fixed sooner than later, bec, just because when the pumps come on, it is, it is shooting water into the, to the wall of the land over. But you have shoot, shooting water out, it doesn't matter if it's concrete, brick, or whatever, it, it's going to corrode eventually. And then it will damage, then it will take away all the concrete, then it'll be dirt, then you're, then, then you're contaminated.
And there have been times before where it leaked out, or it made a mess that they.
I think, yeah, I, in, 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 in other situations, I have seen that, and you had, then you have raw, then you have raw sewer on the outside.
This happened, Mayor, I believe.
Contamination, and, you know, and then you have a whole lot of contaminants that you gotta deal with when you're, when you rehab.
Prevent that for sure.
Yeah, and then this, this does include, like, you're putting a new line or anything like we did, like we did this one. And then this, this does include, uh, you put a new lottery, like we did, like we did this one. Uh, and so that's why, that's why it's one, that was why it's one-fifteen, is because it's the, it's the whole total pack that included, that included engineering, survey, inspection, the rehab, and two new pumps. We don't know, we don't know what shape the pumps are in. The pumps may, the pumps may be good, we may not have to replace them, but, uh, we, uh, we don't know that, so we include the price in there.
When construction begins, where do you redirect, or how will you re- redirect?
Uh, that's, that's another thing, there's not a, there's not another, there's not an upstream manhole closed, so we'll have to set another manhole right there to be able to pump the bypass.
And that's included in the price as well?
Yes, that's put into the price as well. Here, there was a manhole right next to, right next to the highway, and then there's one a couple hundred feet on the other side, so we were able to just bypass without having to do another manhole. And then, uh, so this one, we have to set a, we'll have to set a manhole to bypass, and that's another, that's another reason for, that's another reason for, for the cost.
It sounds like we want to do it, just, we got a budget for it first.
Yeah. And then, I think, like I said, if we can have them back, or put this back on the agenda, the day after budget.
You can do it, you can do it on the nineteenth after you pass your tech, your budget, your tax rate, your budget, and then you can head again.
Sir, while you're here, can I ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead.
Um, with rehabbing it, is that going to enlarge the footprint?
No. I will, it will stay within the fence that's there.
Okay.
It, it shouldn't, it shouldn't make any, it will, we'll have to check, redirect some piping, and then it come, come up out of the manhole, and then up and then down, kind of similar to what we have right here. So it will make the, but it shouldn't, I, I don't know that for a fact until I get the survey in, and I, I start, you know, moving, moving everything around and drawing, but it shouldn't make, it shouldn't, it shouldn't make any, it should be the same size as the side fence that's there. And if it is, that's right there in the middle of, of, of the conestine, so it shouldn't affect the, it should also be considered properly, as easy as it should.
Go ahead.
Evidently, I think the same, the broken central tree, I think it was broken, it was three, it shattered.
It's caused, the pipe is, the pipe looks pretty rusty, it looks pretty rusty and in pretty bad shape.
Next question, I'm sure it's silly, but there's no re, no way for us just to patch that one collar, that one pump connection?